I'm gonna hopefully zoom in. So, really of note initially is just what they're proposing and so what's changing is they're proposing to add this paint room which is about forty feet by thirty feet onto the side of their building and so this would be the new spray booth that they would want to add. In order to do that, the existing site plan that was approved by the city is impacted and so they're trying to reconfigure the parking spaces and the storage areas and the customer parking to try to accommodate the new paint booth and still maintain close to what they had for approved parking on the subject site. And so, really when we looked at the paint booth, we looked at building architecture. They're proposing a paint booth that essentially ties in in terms of its building architecture. I think I have a, it's in the packet, hopefully it shows up here. Alright. Yep. There we go. This is the essential floor plan of the paint booth and kinda how it ties into the existing shop so you can see right in this corner. That'd be the additional paint booth. They'd have access here into the building, they'd have an overhead door that would be located on the end of that paint booth addition. The, the building elevation would be a material that's essentially matching the exterior or very similar. I don't know if you guys know if it matches exact or it's just similar.
Very, very similar.
But it would be close in material to the existing building which is like a split face or I don't know how to describe that panel, concrete type panel, but it would be a material that would match. And so we look at the building exterior and the elevation, it's generally compliant and consistent with what's out there in terms of their existing building. So, with that, a couple of things we did note is mechanical equipment, if there's any stacks that aren't shown, we don't, they're not shown on the plan, but any ventilation does need to be screened from view and so we'd have to work with the applicant on that if it was, if there was anything being proposed that would come through the roof of that building or stick out from the top of that building. It's just gotta be screened from public view so we'd have to work and see what the height of that is and then where that falls into that. But that's really all we looked at as it related to the building. They'd have to comply with the building code and everything like that for the proposed addition, but from a city standpoint as it relates to conditional use permit, as it relates to our kind of overall site plan per view privy, we just looked at the materials are compliant and that it essentially matches what's out there. So, next we looked at the site plan in more detail and as you know, most of you were here when we went through the site plan review process for the 2015 CUP, we had great discussion on the number of parking spaces, where people were parked, how many spaces we'd allow, screening, fencing, landscaping and all of that along with that discussion. And so, in looking at the overall site, we did just an analysis of what's being proposed and we did compare it to what was previously approved. So I'll just go through that a little bit. On the current conditional use permit, we kinda broke down areas for the site into front of building, back of building, Boundary Avenue, and then for sale parking. And so that's kinda, we'll use the same, we'll use the same areas for comparison. So Boundary Avenue, which is the parking that's located here along Boundary Avenue. In the existing plan, there are fifteen spaces that were approved. In the proposed plan, it would be the same. So there'd be no change to the Boundary Avenue parking as a result of the conditional use permit amendment being requested. In front of the building, the applicant's proposing twelve parking spaces which is an addition of five parking spaces, so in the original appro, I'm sorry, an addition of seven parking spaces. In the original parking plan, the city allowed five parking spaces in front of the building. The applicant's now proposing an additional, seven parking spaces which is an additional parking space here in front as well as, oh no, yep, as well as one here and five additional parking spaces that would be here. Now, one of the things that you'll notice that this existing building is proposed to remain, that's the existing kinda shed building that's out on the property. And what you'll see is with the addition of this building out onto the side, the old access point which came through this area here is now essentially being closed off. The applicant's asking if they can use that area or a portion of that area for additional parking. I'll note one thing on that as it relates to overhead doors as I go through the report. So in front of the building, they'd like seven additional parking spaces to what was previously considered. Behind the building, they're proposing thirty-four parking spaces, so that would include all of these spaces here in this area. And in the original, or in the last CUP, the 2015, there was thirty-one, no, I'm sorry, thirty spaces. So it's an addition of four spaces in that area. Some of the spaces that they're stacking or otherwise adding are somewhat of a result of the building, but they're able to add four spaces essentially in this area here right next to the building, which is something that we have to consider. The actual drive aisle between these spaces and these spaces isn't a full drive aisle, but it's also not a full kinda public parking lot either, it's more of a storage parking lot. So, it's something that we did consider in the last iteration, but it's something that I'll look for direction from Planning Commission relating to. And then for sale parking, that's one area that we've made some comments on as well. For sale parking is this area out in front of the fence that was installed after the last CUP. It's out by the MINDOT right-of-way there. They're looking at taking down three trees in this area. The three trees are marked with an X here in order to accommodate this fire access lane or this through lane to go around the backside of the existing building. And then in doing that, they would lose one of their for sale parking spaces, so they're asking for nine for sale parking spaces which is a decrease of one space. When you add those numbers together, in the original 2015 CUP, the city allowed sixty spaces on the site and the proposal in this amended version is sixty-one spaces. So it's an addition of one space that they're asking for overall, broken down into the front parking addition, the rear parking addition, the for sale decrease, and then the Boundary Avenue staying the same. And so that's kind of an overview. So, a couple of things that we'd like, some Planning Commission clarification or direction on, they were pointed out in the staff report. I'll just go through the parking and I have these slides that are the same ones in the So, kinda the first thought or question and this is something that we're asking Planning Commission for clarification on, we haven't really gone through this with the applicant as it relates to the overall site plan, but they're proposing to have parking spaces essentially in front of an access door in this location. One in this location is kind of half in front of it and then there's an access door here for the building. They, they do use those doors, bring cars in and out. There is overlap though where they don't use those and they could have cars parked, but I'm looking for essentially direction or clarification to the applicant relating to if these spaces would be considered for parking by the city given that the overhead doors somewhat conflict. The other thing that was talked about in detail relating to these spaces out in front with the last go-around of the plan was the idea that those are highly visible from Highway Twelve and at that time, the city had recommended that we reduce the number of spaces along Highway Twelve and focus on the back area as being screened storage essentially. So whether or not that would be something that would be permitted by the Planning Commission, I'd be looking for feedback on. I think that if you were to take out the spaces that are directly impacted by the overhead doors, you're talking four to five spaces potentially that are maybe in conflict. The other area that I just wanted clarification on, this is something we had, we had talked about and asked for clarification on, I think at the last go-around, but the applicant did provide us with the survey information this time that we had asked for, trying to understand how those for sale parking spaces related to the existing bituminous, the existing fence, and then the ability to access those. And I know when most of you were here, we talked about this, the idea that we wanted access to those spaces to be from internal to the site, not through the MINDOT right-of-way. And that's something that hasn't happened, but we now kinda understand where the bituminous parking line is on that site. And in the, in this slide here, you can see that these parking spaces, just a small piece of the parking space is actually paved. This line here basically represents the edge of the blacktop, so anything to this side of the line is paved and this area that's outlined is all unpaved right now. There might be a little bit of gravel there, but it's mostly grass. And then you can see where those three trees are just from a reference standpoint out in the site. So the question is, how do we wanna view those spaces? Do we want to continue to allow them kinda as they've historically been used? Do we want to not allow those? Do we want those to be moved back into a paved area and accessed via the paved area of the site to try to accomplish, I think what we had talked about at the last go-around? But that's a question obviously we need to look at. One of the things to note, there is the existing chain link, I'm sorry, board-on-board fence that was installed. It's actually right here. The, you can see that modification of that fence is gonna be required to be able to accommodate a drive aisle if it's gonna go to the backside of the building. So maybe, maybe there's a way to incorporate all that in, but right now on these nine spaces, only this little kinda sliver of those spaces is actually paved with bituminous. And then, the city did look at the fire access road configuration. This was a comment in the last go-around of the, of the CUP when we were looking at it was just that, let me go back to the overall plan. There you go. So in the overall, you can see this fire access lane. In the last go-around, we had asked that that fire access lane be striped or delineated in a manner that was clear so that it would main, it could be maintained so we could get emergency vehicle access essentially through the site. And so on the, in the 2015 CUP, that was one of the conditions. It, it hasn't been done to this point and neither has striping of the overall parking area, so just want confirmation or clarification that we wanna see that fire access lane. I know from emergency vehicle standpoint or services standpoint, that was something that we wanna clearly delineate so that it's maintained and we can keep vehicles out of that so in the case of an emergency that we'd have the ability to get through there. So with that, I think we'd wanna just get clarification. Outside of that, one of the things that I did do just for note is just compared today, what has been done off of the 2015 CUP just to, I mean, so we're not, not discussing that and the, I just kinda went through a couple of the items, but from the 2015 CUP, there, a lot of the things have been done, the fencing, they've moved the dumpster location, they've cleaned up the parking in front, they've added signage to the parking in front, lighting for the most part on the building has been added. So, a lot of the things that we had talked about in that 2015 CUP have been updated and done by the applicant. But a couple of things just noting, and I just noted this, parking lot striping, the front spaces are striped but nothing else, was striped in the back and that's something that we had conditioned along with that fire access lane. And so those, those two areas, striping of the fire access and signage relating to no parking as well as the parking spaces in back. And then, the applicant did install some of the landscaping that we talked about and we actually worked on providing that landscaping. So there was some evergreen landscaping that was provided on this lot, here in the back of this lot that was helping to try to screen some of that. There was some additional landscaping that we required up against the fence and again, this came into play because of some of the concerns we had from property owners across the street looking into that corner. So with that, the landscape in that area and we had specific criteria for what that was, six-foot-high arbor, seven-six-foot-high arbor vida, nine-thirty-six-inch door burning bush or similar and twenty-five-one-gallon feather reed grass, that was that kinda area along that fence just trying to enhance that corner. That was not, or has not been installed at this point, so I just pointed that out 'cause I know you would ask what is the, what has been done as it relates to 2015. Like I said, a lot of the conditions, if you go back and you look at the resolution from the 2015 which is included in the packet, there's a lot of things that were in that and a lot of things have been done. So, I'd be looking for direction from the Planning Commission relating to essentially a lot of the parking-related issues, how you think that relates to the criteria for granting an amendment to the conditional use permit. Essentially, does this kinda fit into the overall criteria? Those criteria are outlined in the applicable standards which are in the back of the report. I won't read them all, but essentially maintaining reasonable use and enjoyment of the surrounding properties, health, safety and welfare of the surrounding property owners, establish that the conditional use won't impede development or surrounding vacant property and that there's adequate off-street parking and loading. And then there's adequate measures to prevent really any nuisances, odor, sight, or visual, sound, any of those things, blight have been adequately mitigated by the applicant. So those, that's the basis for that and those criteria spelled out, but ultimately you have to find that those criteria are met which are the same criteria for granting the initial, the initial conditional use permit. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, I know the applicants are here as well.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing at seven fourteen. Who would like to start?
I'll start off with the easy one.
Okay.
Math. On page four, you, you went through the pluses and minuses per area for parking?
Yep.
When I add up those pluses and minuses, I don't get an increase of one.
What do you get?
It's on page four.
Three and four, I guess.
Three and four, yeah.
It's possible.
Addition, we add seven, add four, subtract one, and then the bottom line says increase by one and it doesn't.
Alright, hold on, I gotta get a worksheet. Dan, where are you at on this?
You have to get out his calendar.
Well, I just, I just wanna look at what I've got. So I've got, so if we compare apples to apples though on the parking, so in the, in the addition, or in the initial resolution, there's fifteen spaces on Boundary, five in front, thirty behind, and ten for sale, that equals sixty?
Yeah.
And that math looks right?
It's on page three.
Okay. So then in the proposed, they have fifteen, twelve, thirty-four and nine. That does not add sixty-one, what is that?
Seven, four, eight, three, fifty, three, fifty-five, six, five, seven.
There you go. So I was off by, I probably was off by the...
Are we, is it sixty-one or is it seventy?
Seventy. Is that, do you have those numbers?
I have seventy-three, but I've kinda got it wrong.
This was supposed to be easy. Fifteen, twelve, thirty-four, nine, seven.
There are two on Boundary, there are two additional that sometimes are easy to overlook. We have five and seven and then two on the, on the north, on the north side of the building.
Yeah. So you've got seven, or you've got one, two, three, four, five, one, and then seven is twelve and two is fourteen?
Correct.
So you're losing one on Boundary?
Well, and, is it my, should I speak?
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
All right. So, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission, thank you for letting us speak tonight. I'm Michelle Kroll, I'm here with my husband Kurt Kroll and our son Tucker Kroll.
Thank you.
So, the, the drawing that I have with me is, I don't know how updated that is. You know, we, we were on what we thought was the agenda for April and then some changes were made, but I have seventy-three on the drawing that I have, so I'm not sure if we're looking at the same drawing.
Do you, do you have a, I'm looking for the date on the drawing. This one is four, six, nine, eighteen?
Yeah, we have four, twenty, or two, twenty-seven.
So, mine's a little bit older.
Yeah.
Ours is a little bit older.
Yeah, I think there is two in, so it's two, twenty-seven, three, sixteen, and then four, six is what I've got. So four, six is the one that, this plan.
And I'm, and I'm not looking, we're not looking at that one.
Okay. So I, yeah, I don't know, I think my numbers are probably, well, I don't know, I think my numbers are good as far as the total, but Dan's gonna count them for me?
Well, we're closer to seventy than we are to sixty-one.
It's seven, yeah, those numbers are right, my math was wrong, so yeah, but maybe count them.
Those calculated.
Can you see them?
I actually wanted to bring that up. When you were going over the numbers, I was going to bring that up myself.
In looking at the numbers and, and the three spots just that he had on this particular one, how, how do you park something in front of doors that people go in and out of?
Yes, that was another thing that I wanted to talk about. Mark had mentioned that many of the garage doors were blocked, but we actually have four that are, that are there right now that are currently using and none of them are blocked. So the one garage door in the front, when you look at a legal parking stall, it does appear that it would be partially blocked on the south side of the building.
Are you talking, do you wanna point?
Do you mind if I just go up here?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mine is on the alcohol. Okay, so, where are we? Okay, so this parking, this garage door right here, it looks as though this stall partially blocks it, but you can park a full-size car there, even a Suburban, and it doesn't encroach in, with the garage door. So this garage door is always open. This garage door on the existing building with our proposed parking on Boundary, you can see that we don't have a proposed spot there designated, so that is always open and that is always open during a business day. That's on the east side. And then on the backside of the building, on the north side, we don't show parking in front of that door and we do not park in front of that door during a business day either. So, we currently are using three garage doors right now, but we don't park in front of them. So, just for a little clarification there. And then the parking that he is concerned about would be on the new proposed doors. This door is strictly for our Bobcat and maybe a snowplow or any auxiliary equipment that Bobcats have. It's not a door we would use as a service door daily, it would be more for storage. And then this door is how we would exit the new spray booth, the new spray booth. So, chances are we wouldn't be able to have cars there, but on the days that we have some overflow parking or needing some parking spaces, we might use that spot temporarily, but we wouldn't be able to use it full-time, so we wouldn't be able to use our spray booth. So we do have three garage doors right now that are not blocked.
Excuse me, Michelle, the spray booth is actually a drive-through spray booth.
Well, that's what I'm saying, to come out.
Right, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to be going out every single day, we probably wouldn't be, we'd be backing back into the shop. But we have it, the new spray booth set up as a full drive-through just in case we wanna exit out, then we could exit out through the west wall, the west spot where she has the parking spots or where they have the parking spots.
Are you counting on the, on the east side, your main access, are you counting that as a parking stall right in front?
No, we're not. It's showing, it's, it's on that plan that you're looking at, it's reflecting a wider opening.
It says fourteen point zero.
Yes, and that's not an allocated parking stall. The parking stalls are parallel and more narrow.
Yeah, this one is not, right, I don't count that one either. And that one, for the most part.
Well, if I, then where's the fifteenth one then?
So, well, so this one is not an allocated parking stall in front of that garage door. This does not have an allocated parking stall on the south side. And then on the north side, we do not show an alloc, any allocated parking spots.
But you show, and it talks about fifteen stalls on Boundary Avenue and...
Yes.
On the far south end, where it looks like kind of a partial line there, is that considered a stall?
This, this little...
No, keep going, keep going south to the right.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
All the way to the end.
Oh, this one, I don't believe we're counting that everywhere on your plan. Again, I...
Well, there's fifteen, I, there was fifteen approved on the front, or on Boundary and I, I'm with you, Seven, I don't, I thought, I looked at if anything had changed, so I just compared plan to plan and I didn't see a change, so...
I count fourteen...
I do too.
Unless that...
This little one right here?
No, unless this is a stall. And I'm counting this as number one and I count fourteen.
I do too.
I guess whatever you'd like to see there.
Okay.
Would be fine.
Well, my, me...
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, yes. Please.
I guess my concern is visibility from twelve and the number, number of parking spaces that front twelve, and I guess we'll get to the, on sale in a minute or two, but blocking, I guess my first thought on blocking the service door on the paint building, at first I thought, no, we can't count that, but I guess upon further thinking about it, listening to your explanation, I guess I'm okay with whatever's, you know, sort of behind the fence, you can do with what, as you wish, as long as the fire lane is maintained and striped. But to me, it's, it's more, the public nuisance is what is, is the congestion of cars and the mud and so forth on the, on the Highway Twelve side. So, my biggest concern, I guess, along Highway Twelve is the for sales, is the for-sale area and how that looks. And I don't see any way you can access those stalls without going on the MINDOT right-of-way. And it was a condition of the original or the last CUP that access had to be internal and not over the MINDOT right-of-way and it was, and it was to be paved too, is that correct?
Yeah, and although, I mean, I, that's what I had thought as well, but when I was reading the, the CUP, I didn't see that in writing. And it had been a huge conversation. And...
Yeah, and it was in the staff report that was presented and in the discussion was that, that it'd be accessed internal to the site.
And I know this went back and forth with council several times, so I don't know if somehow it got lost and all of that. But, I, I still feel the same about the for-sale and I'm strongly opposed to adding seven additional, right in front on the south side. One of the things, you have to stripe handicap accessible, you, I mean, you have to put something in there that is handicapped accessible, so that's one of those things that has to be done. But putting, I, I get concerned, 'cause I think part of what, when we were saying, don't put so much up there in the front, was that eventually there were so many cars that they were literally almost sitting on the stop sign.
Before.
And, before.
Oh, yeah.
And that got better. And so, my concern is that, I understand what you're saying, Michelle, about the, you know, that's not really, you can get a parking space by that. I don't agree with putting a parking space in front of a door that sometimes people are gonna come out of, but in the front, if you add all of those, trying to make sure that we, that, that there isn't that, again, where there's, I, I always thought that it was somebody's idea of a game, let's see how close we can get to the stop sign, or let's see how many we can get in there between the stop sign and the building kinda thing. And, and I think it has to do with safety, it has to do with how some... And, um, and I think it has to do with, um, safety, it has to do with how something visually looks. Is it possible that, um, I know where the fence is down there behind the for-sale sign, and I, and I don't know that, for the for-sale ones, I don't know that this is doable, but what if there was a fence, I know you want to take away the trees, which I'm opposed to, but it, you're driving on DOT property every time that you take that out. Is there a way to make it so that the fence comes up, and it's closer to the road, and, and, or, or you, you put, that there's somehow that you can make sure that you're accessing those cars on and off through your property, rather than on DOT land? And, and I know that has something to do with the fence, um, I don't think you'd have to take the trees out, um, because then I also look at, I know that you did put some landscaping, um, we do need to make sure that it gets done in the northeast corner up there, but it also then would mean that you'd have to do something in terms of, um, landscaping or something visually, in particular if you take the trees away.
Michelle? If, if we were to, what you're asking us is, "Don't take the trees out here, but we have to take them out here." And you're telling us, or asking us, this is from here to here is paved, from here is black dirt.
Right.
Gravel. If we paved to the DOT line, we should be able to easy pull out of the stall and drive out without driving on the DOT's property. There's the, I'm pretty sure we're not driving on the DOT's property, because I can see the lines where they have the state. So, if we were to make sure that we have this right on the money, as far as the, the blacktop, we should, and even if we had a turn, and I don't know how you guys feel about that, or leave it the way it is, but if you turn it, then it's very easy just to back in, but never driving on the DOT, or falling off of it. But would that work for you guys?
It would be better, yes.
Well, and to, um, the point of the trees, I believe one of the trees, I'd have to revisit that. Maybe you, you would know more than we would, um, with your landscaping background. Um, but one of the trees, I think, is diseased, but we really weren't wanting to remove the trees. There, it's a nice buffer, and it softens the fence line.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was Mark Ronberg or, or who, but someone made the suggestion of removing them because it appears that they're in the parking stalls, but we've been working around those trees for thirty-plus years, and we don't need to remove them to make the spaces work for us. Um, but when you look at the drawing, it looks as though that, you know, it's necessary to remove them, but it, it, it isn't in all practicality, um, for us, we don't need to remove them.
It looks like one tree, because of the fire, trucks have to get in there.
The one in, maybe, maybe so, that one in the corner, yes. And then, I think there is one that's diseased. I think there's, is there an elm out there, Mark? I don't really, there's an elm? I, perhaps that's the one. I'd have to look, but we, we would rather leave the trees.
I would be interested if it was the one that was closer that has to go.
I, wouldn't it? Yes, yes.
But if you were to pave this?
It might, it might-
You're losing the tree.
It might hurt the trees, right? Or, yeah.
Oh, I, I don't, I have a hard time seeing how that's sort of realistic, how you've got your cars arranged in there with location of the trees relative to how you've got the stalls laid out. You know, the, the, the third one, I can't quite read which one it is there, but the third stall down from, from, from the top, looks like it's pretty close to the middle of that stall, and, um, even the first one's, you know, partially into that stall. You've got, what, two trees down at the far, or maybe one tree at the far north end that is kind of far out. I'm not sure how you would get around that tree into the stall without going on mid-dot property.
I know, it's almost, um, easier to look at it on-site. And we seldom have ten cars there as well. I don't know if you've noticed that, but
Yeah, that's where the drawing should match your reality, where you actually put the cars, rather than just sort of-
Yes, but it's not very often that we have ten full car, ten cars sitting out there. I, proba, probably, probably, yes, but usually not.
Where, where are you painting your cars now, since the fire?
We're using two spray booths. Um, we're using a spray booth in Long Lake, and we're using a spray booth in Maple Plain. And then, we do some spot spraying at our location, too.
We have our old spray booth going, the one originally that we started.
So, you, you repaired that, or, for lack of a better word?
Yeah, we-
Just for panels and some spot.
We retrofitted it, got it up and running against it, could do some.
And that's, that's not something that, you know, you want-
Is it going to be permanent? No.
Okay.
No, we need, we need, we had a really nice spray booth. We had a really nice spray booth. And very, very efficient, and very effective, and very clean, did an awesome job. And now, we don't have that. The new one that we're getting is going to be the state-of-the-art again.
Well, it wasn't that nice. It was thirty years old, but-
It was really nice from thirty years ago.
The positive, the positive thing about that is that it happened during a business day, um, like, mid to late morning. I wasn't there, but, um, we had just had an insurance inspection, um, in April. We renew our, our insurance policies in April, and one of the criteria, they always give us a list of, you know, your lids weren't covered, this, this, that fluorescent light didn't have a cage on it, you know, so forth and so on. Um, but they required that our extinguishers were charged. So, all of the employees were able to grab extinguishers that had been charged just a few months prior. And if that would have happened at night, I don't, I don't know.
Prime the whole building.
It would have been catastrophic. And it was contained only in the spray booth, so there wasn't any damage outside of the spray booth. There wasn't any damage to the building outside of the spray, no one was injured. The fire department responded so efficiently, and it was, it was the best scenario if it, you know, if it had to have happened, the timing, and the way the police and fire department handled it, and our employees, and so. As devastating as it was, I, we, we feel pretty fortunate.
Um, in terms of, um, venting or, or whatever, is there something that is going to have to be on the roof, or on something that you're going to have to screen?
Well, it should be exactly like we had before. We had four-foot stacks coming off the roof.
And we'll screen, but we'll screen those.
Yeah, we have to screen them.
Okay. In, in going through this, um, I, I mean, I have other comments, but overall, um, I'm, eh, my reaction when I got done was, I don't feel like this is complete. And, and if it was, and, and it has everything to do with, um, you know, putting the stacks up and saying, "Here's how it's going to be screened," to, "Here's how we're going to handle that," and know indeed, we have to take a couple of parking spaces away, um, making sure that it is very clear where things should be, um, I just didn't feel like I was looking at, like, a complete, um, project.
With the exception of the, um, the screening on top of the roof, um, we could pave to the, the mid-dot, the, the right-of-way, remove the trees that are proposed, and it, it actually is complete with, with the exception of not showing the screening for the, the venting. I don't know what else is missing.
We didn't have screening before. Do we need screening this time? We didn't, we didn't have screening before on the venting.
Yeah, because it wouldn't have been probably recorded at the time.
Probably a different code, yeah.
For the new stuff.
But I, I think that's all that's not shown, unless there's something that you would like us to depict in a drawing that we haven't.
Is there an overhead door right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was that other, that was that other area, but, um, from a planning commission standpoint, walking through, huh, I mean, is there a consensus on these spaces, and whether or not you want to see more spaces out here? And then, let's try to resolve that, because I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that you can get these spaces in their current configuration. There's not enough room to pull in and then drive out on your property?
Well, there is when you're, and, and-
Well, down, down here, I think you're right.
Feel free to-
These couple of spaces here.
Make us, please stop by for a site visit, because Mark Ronberg and I have scratched our forehead many times, and they've actually come out several times regarding that area, because when you look at it on paper, it just, something doesn't look right, and they, they've made several site visits since we've looked at this the last time, a couple of years ago. And when you're standing there, there's plenty of room. But again, the legal parking spaces are larger on paper than what you really need in real life. It's like, imagine your garage, your garage, um, garages at home.
Right.
You have so much more room around your cars inside your garage, but yet, you have a two-car garage or a one-car garage, and when in essence, you might have a mower and garbage cans, and, you know, there's plenty of room around those.
This is that area, Kurt, that I'm talking about. You can see where you guys drive is actually way out here.
Well, actually, the fence is backed up now. You've got to remember, the fence is actually pushed back.
No, I, I understand, but I-
Right.
But it, you can see in the aerial, I was going to grab the Google, or, I, I just, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I just know you can't turn a car in that space.
You, you back them-
Without getting onto the-
Well, you back them in.
That picture is pretty much a setback.
No, right, this is an older, I understand, but I, I, I'm still-
Our tracks are more north now, because the fence is more north now.
Right.
If you're looking at a picture, the fence is not accurate, so the tracks are not accurate.
Now, everything is more north, but when you, we don't drive them down and try to back them in. We back them all the way in and turn in. That's how we do it. You back them all the way down and turn them in, one, one turn, you're in. But we do understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
That it's tight. We never have a customer go out there and try to pull a car out.
So that's-
A car would be in the shop again.
Right. Well, they'd be, they'd be in the mid-dot right-of-way, stuck in the ditch, because it is very wet in the mid-dot right-of-way, so.
Yeah.
So, we don't go in there, we can't drive in there.
One of the, um, one of your, I had a question, I don't know what this one is. The one, let's see, what is that? I'm looking for some identification here. The middle said DS, or something like that. Anyway, one of the notes that I was reading on here says, "Confirm building door type and size. Overhead door could be too short."
Overhead door, pardon?
Could be too short.
Um, is that for the nine-foot door for our Bobcat, or?
I think it's for the big one. Do you see what I mean? Right in there. Right here.
So, my drawing shows sixteenth street.
So, that's the paint room, that's the drive-through.
And if they came through, it would be the big door, because you were talking about over here, it would be the little b one.
Right, this, this is just dead space, we told them to put a small door in here, so we can just drive over there.
Right, but this one, where somebody would come out, that's, that's where I was reading. And that might explain why you're thinking about going back out the other way, but it was like, if you're going to, I, I just found it curious.
All right, I don't see, I don't see what your question is. What is the question?
Why, why does it say that the door could be too short, which would mean that some, you know, vehicle or something could potentially go through there and be hired?
Oh, because maybe the door, meaning that booth doors are a little higher than what this door is at, which is fine, if that's what they were trying to spell out, but we don't care.
Oh, that the booth doors would be?
Yeah, they're a little taller than what, uh, it might be too short by an inch. That's, we better pay attention to what we're doing. And we better make sure the cars, make sure the cars are parked. Yeah, make sure the cars are parked here, so we don't run into them, or we, we're putting a drive-in booth, chances are, it would be used maybe once a month, drive it all the way through. But what we're trying to do is that, if we have to load some of the outside, we need to put around, drive something large into the spray booth, and drive it back up. That's why it's going to be a drive-through spray booth. Not necessarily, we're not necessarily going to throw it in there, so that's why I don't park this spot so quickly. Because chances are, we, we don't go through the booth once a month, actually, all the way through. So, that notation is, thanks for bringing it up.
Well, we're, okay, um.
I have two questions, okay? My first question is, um, the new paint booth that's going to do the drive-through is further back in the property, is what I understand, right?
Kind of in the middle of it.
Further back. No, it's, are you using the same spot where it is now? I'm, I guess I'm, I'm-
Say it one more time, ask the question one more time.
They're going to build a, a new building.
A new building behind, so-
Alongside of it.
Here, I'm going to go to the aerial.
On the west side.
Michelle?
Okay.
See if we, I know this is the older picture, but-
So, this is our existing building.
Yes.
And the new proposed building, it's just for the spray booth, and a small little storage area for the Bobcat is right here. So, it runs-
Well, my concern is the fire trucks, if they ever have to get on your property again, hopefully, never, ever, ever, okay? They would have a easy way to get to and assist any situation that's on the property.
Yes.
Right, they would come through the back gates like they would have existed.
Mark, can you put there?
Yeah.
So, this is the proposed, this is the proposed fire lane that Mark Ronberg, um, has drawn, that-
And it comes out west of the new building.
Okay.
Do you see that?
Yes.
So, this would be the new building.
Mm-hmm.
This little bump out that runs parallel with the, the north side of the building, and the fire lane comes around it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then, my other concern was, and always has been, and I probably won't make friends for saying this, is, um, I liked it when we had the five spaces. I can see where you could add more spaces up at the front, but I'm thinking seven is way too many. It will give a clutter look again. And I'm all about businesses in town wanting to stay, but I don't want a clutter look. So, I don't know if you could make more of your customers park on Boundary, and-
And when you were adding the eleven, what you were doing was actually adding, you're counting these, right?
Yes.
And then, you're counting that, and these.
Correct.
Okay. So, you're not jamming them in here, and you're going to mark one as handicap.
What's the net increase on the Highway twelve side? Is it, uh, is it five, or six?
I think it's seven, because what was approved in the original plan was five in front, right here.
Yes.
So, now they show six in front.
Okay.
Six here, or, uh, five here, and one here. So, that's your plus seven.
And I don't know about adding another one up there, but-
How did, how did the, how did that get, we configured in the front of the building?
I think, see the, see the concrete walk here?
Yeah.
In the original plan, that was left open right there. But the reality is, I think people park over it often.
They do, and we move them right away.
Yeah.
Mark Ronberg thought that would be, um, an ideal spot for, at handicap accessible, because of the, um, the building has the sidewalk along the front of it with a step, and that front spot to the two front doors has a gradual cement incline without a step.
So, you're proposing to cha, change the, uh, loading area for the accessible parking to be in front of the front door, then?
Well, we didn't propose-
Well, right now, it's showing right here.
But if that's what you would like us to, to show, that would be, I know Mark Ronberg has, that would be a good spot for it.
Well, and by city and, and state, you need to have handicap.
Yeah, the requirement.
Farm it, yeah, and have it, have it. So, a lot of times, that would mean that people should not be there.
Right, we moved it, when a car comes in, we move it right away.
Yeah, so you-
Well, it's, it's a federal law.
Yes.
And actually, the, since that is your, your main and only, uh, accessible parking, the, the, uh, no parking area really has to be eight feet wide, not five, as is shown there. First stall, I know I do some ADA work at, at work, so it, it's, the rules I'm familiar with. The first, the first stall must be van, it's called van accessible, which has an eight-foot, uh, sort of no parking- The first, the first stall must be van, it's called van accessible, which has an eight foot sort of no parking striped area, not five. Any additional one can be five, but the first one has to be eight. So that would probably be best to put right in front of the front door or as, as Mark has suggested. But that would reconfigure everything else then too. So you might not be able to get six out of that space.
Yeah, I think.
It looks like, it looks like back the, westernly most one might be kind of clipped by the fire, fire lane anyway.
I have to have a Volkswagen to get him out.
Is that what you drive?
No.
Easy pecking.
She has a big heart.
Well, I agree with, with Barb, I guess, addition of seven along this front edge is going to add to the clutteredness, especially with the, the new, the for sale cars to me look pretty cluttered too when it's surrounded by mud and it looks really kind of shabby in my view.
So we can pave that.
I would propose, I guess I would like to see that area moved up as well. Just in terms of paving and striping and make it look organized. Behind the fence, I mean, I guess I'm willing to concede putting cars in front of access doors. It's not a public circulation thing, it's, you're managing your own vehicles behind there. So that to me, that's a good sort of trade-off.
So we are looking at a couple fewer parking spaces, right? If.
So there's fourteen on Boundary, that's not fifteen. So fourteen on Boundary. In front of the building, if we add the one accessible space, we're back to five spaces, I think, is what the consensus is probably.
Yeah.
And then what about the one here?
I, the way that Michelle explained it, I'm, I'm okay with that one.
I am too.
And semi-okay with the five that are right below that left purple one.
This?
Except, yeah, except for, I don't know how close the door is.
Where is the door in that wall?
It's in the middle.
It's center.
It, Stephen, if you look here, this door runs all the way through.
So maybe.
And that's a door that you use frequently to process cars through?
Yes, that's the mechanic area and they have hoists right outside that door. So they use that door often and our customers actually, we serve us hundreds of customers a month. And when the natural flow of coming in, if the front parking lot has four or five cars there, instead of backing up and going down Boundary Avenue, they tend to just, you know.
Keep going.
They go to the parking lot, but I understand, I don't like it when it looks cluttered either personally.
Maybe if you make that two, make the, or lose, lose, lose two on the southeast side and keep three closest to the shed.
How about we lose one, we keep four?
But. You should be happy with it.
Does it make a deal?
Just start and throw it out there. No one is saying it on our side here, so.
If, if you mark that parking stall as headed to go in, you know, like park here only if you're.
Entering.
Entering for service or whatever.
But the flow is to come east to west, right?
Well, the actual flow, this, this, this door gets opened up and it gets opened up for year full during summer. But the actual flow is to take power out, come into the shop, load our hoist this way because our hoists are all like this. I mean, we, honestly, we barely seldom come out of this door. We usually come right out of this door back around to the wash zone. But we would have to lease our own cells if we're parking cars in front of our doors that we don't hit ours, you know, we don't hit the customer in there. But if we do back it down to just four here, that would give us plenty of room to come out of this door and get away. When you, when you scale it on a piece of paper, it looks really tight, but when you get it applied and.
See it actually, take a car through the shop, it actually, there's plenty of room.
What if you turned it forty-five degrees and lined up kind of against the shed wall?
That'd be great.
Are you talking about taking this?